I will be turning that over to attorney for.
Report out.
Report out.
So, direction given to staff.
Direction was given to staff.
Okay. Direction was given to staff for item A. For item B, direction also was given to staff. And for item C, am I in the right? Yep. That will be on our consent agenda. And at that point, the public can ask to have that pulled if they have any questions. And for item D as well, direction was given to staff. Okay, on to regular agenda. On regular agenda, we have a presentation.
Can we go to approval of the agenda?
Oh, sorry.
Item three.
Yes, sorry. Approval of agenda.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Public comment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, yep, so, public comment, yes. I'm all turned around tonight, sorry guys. Public comment? No? Okay.
Yeah, how about public comment?
On the approval of agenda?
Oh, no, not about that today.
Okay. Okay. Item four.
Here's a quote on it.
Aye.
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 It's five oh. Item four, public comment. No, you can't.
Kristi Reesman, 1540 Finnegan Lane, Angels Camp. It recently came to my attention, yesterday actually, that several candidates for county office were contacted and told that they needed to remove their campaign signs that were in the historic district. And this happens to be a topic that I know a little bit about. And that is a violation of the First Amendment rights that citizens have to place really any restrictions on campaign signs. But it's a topic that was reheard at the US Supreme Court in January of 2015. And that Supreme Court unanimously decided that restrictions may not be placed on political signs on private property. I brought along a copy of the syllabus for that decision, but I did email the full decision to Vice Mayor Herman, and she mentioned that she would see that it got distributed. I really, really encourage you to read the entire opinion of all the justices because it goes into detail about why it's so important for us citizens to have our speech heard, particularly when it comes to electing officials. I believe that the reason that the phone calls were made was due to a section of the Historic Commercial District Ordinance, 17.26.110 exempted signs, where it states that temporary political election or campaign signs not exceeding four square feet an area can be placed in the historic district. And what's really strange about this section is that I was on the Planning Commission from the end of 2010 until 2013, and we talked about sign ordinances a lot, constantly, almost every meeting. And this ordinance states that it was passed in 2012. And I have to admit that I'm a little bit of a document hoarder. So I went back and I looked at all of the Planning Commission packets from the end of 2011 through 2013 when I went off, and I can't find any mention of this. I can, however, find mentions of the ordinances before and in front of this. And so I'm wondering if this somehow got slipped in there in a way that maybe it wasn't properly vetted or voted upon. Because we did talk about several other things that I did find in our packet, particularly in this same section. Item E is the political signs, but the one right above it, item D, has to do with real estate for sale signs, which California law also does not allow unreasonable restrictions to be placed on for sale signs on real property. And there's a restriction above it right on there. And I found in about the middle of 2012, we specifically did discuss that particular law. And we, our decision as a Planning Commission was, no, we're not going to put that anywhere in the sign ordinance because it's illegal. So that is the second thing that kind of led me to be a little bit concerned about this. The base sign ordinance, 15.12.210 for temporary signs, is consistent with California state law. So basically, these, several people were called and told to remove their signs. Some of them were signs that were in the exact same location that they were in throughout the primary election. And I also think that it's somewhat inappropriate to demand the removal of these signs when they've been in the same position for, you know, quite some time, that all of a sudden, less than a month before the election, those signs are removed. It may appear, and I don't think this is necessarily the case, but it certainly gives the appearance that the City of Angels Camp is trying to influence the decision of the voters when that wouldn't be a proper thing to do. What I emailed a great deal of information to Vice Mayor Herman, and she said that she would forward it and get it distributed. But being that there's such a short time left on the, before the election period, I'm hoping that you guys will make a decision to suspend enforcement of that particular section of the code. I have an article that I'm also going to hand out to you and was in the email, that the San Luis Obispo County had the exact same ordinance. And this article, which was from April, talks about how they made a decision to suspend enforcement of that default to state law, which is 32 square feet for an election sign. And just suspend enforcement of that until such time as they can actually look into it a little bit deeper. And I think that hopefully most of you would agree with me, that if we need to err on how big is a sign or the First Amendment rights of the people who live here, I think that it would be appropriate to err on the First Amendment rights. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Amy Augustine, City Planner. Just briefly, to clarify the record, two candidates for the same office were asked to relocate their signs out of the historic district and were encouraged instead to put up signs of four square feet within the historic district in accordance with the zoning ordinance and code. And we'll be working with the city attorney, of course, to look into the other information that was brought up. But just wanted to make sure that you knew that they were not asked to remove them entirely. They were asked to downsize them. There were only two. We did not make demands. We worked with them until they were able to remove them, and they were both cooperative. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Matt Oss Patel. I'm with Bardell Wells Associates. I just wanted to come tonight to make an informal introduction and let you know that we're willing and eager to jump in and help you guys out with any city engineering services that you might need. Thanks.
Good evening, council. Speaking on two subjects tonight, first is Debbie Ponte as a volunteer chair for the Mark Twain Wild West event. And I'm happy to report that we're on board and moving forward, and the event will go off, fingers crossed, without a hitch, on Saturday from 10 to 5 in downtown Angels Camp. So we have the Gold Rush Street Fair, where we have over 60 vendors joining us in regards to arts and crafts. We have live music, comedy, and entertainment on three different stages, including the Kit Carson Mountain Men, the Blue Canyon Gang, and the, my favorite, the Shady Ladies. In addition to the Old West Trio and the Black Irish Band, and we have 10 different local musicians that will playing on the street throughout the event. We have our Nuggets of Gold Raffle, which is sponsored by Cal Waste, a $5,000 donation for the raffle. And, excuse me, tickets are $10 each, $3 for $25, can be purchased online the day of the event, so people can win the Nuggets of Gold or $3,000 cash or an overnight trip to Virginia City. Some people have asked, why are we promoting an area out of Angels Camp to travel to? For those of you who know about Mark Twain, you'll know about Virginia City, so that's all I'll say there. Food, beer, and wine. We have a Gold Rush Village with about 20 different vineyards, vendors, offering all sorts of interactive activities for kids, including a watermelon spitting contest. And those of you who forgot how to jump rope and play hopscotch, we have those games too. We're fortunate to have the Angels Camp Museum, that will have the Henry Angel tent there and all sorts of products and displays for folks to take advantage of, to take a look and look at, reflect, you might say, on our Gold Rush history. This year, we have a really unique opportunity for our grand opening ceremonies. We have the Angels Camp Fire Department, who will have their ladder truck on display and the American flag on display. And we have a Navy veteran, James Greer, who lives in Manteca but has connections to the area. Will be here to seeing the Star Sprinkled banner, and I encourage you to join us at the 10 o'clock hour for that. And then we have photo op opportunities with Mark Twain throughout town, as well as some Frog photo op opportunities. Free admission. We've raised over $15,000 for this event, and we have about $17,000 of in-kind donations to help support this. So we encourage you to come on down, and I'm hopeful that I'll see ticket sales from all the council members. Next, I'd like to speak on behalf of Destination Angels Camp. In our public-private partnership with the City of Angels Camp, we have our Fact C, Measure C fact sheet that we've been distributing throughout town. It's just a fact sheet only to inform and educate, so and encourage voters of Angels Camp to become informed. And this can be picked up in various locations, businesses throughout town, including City Hall, for those who wish to become informed and educated about Measure C, which is imposing a half-cent transaction and use tax increase within the City of Angels Camp. So it comes out to about a nickel for every $10 spent. So we have fact sheets in front of you there. Thank you.
Are there any other public comment?
Okay. Item five, consent agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda. Is there any council member that wish to pull an item?
I'd like to pull the minutes. A, just for a brief question or two.
Any other? Is there any public comment on any of the consent agenda items? Nope.
I move to approve items B, C, and D. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, item A.
For Melissa, when we approved that, there was discussion about recovery because it was understood that an automobile hit that thing. Avila wants to charge us to repair. So I didn't see that in the minutes that we'd agreed to try to pursue that. And was that, did I misunderstand that?
I don't believe we've received the invoice for the repairs associated with the vehicle accident. I'm still waiting for that.
No, no, no. The ore cart. Was my understanding that was knocked over by an automobile.
Right. So I don't have a quote for those repairs yet. This, the 1075, was for the relocation of the sprinkler system that had been placed in a driveway.
Oh, my apologies. I thought it was for both.
But I haven't seen the ore cart. We know that that's coming. I just haven't seen the invoice for that. And then I haven't done any research as to whether or not it's insured or if we can get those costs covered. I don't know.
Okay. Fine. If that's the case, I move to approve A as stated. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On to a regular agenda. Item A, a presentation on downtown historic building tax. And for.
I asked to come before you and was asked to come before you to bring you up to date on a project that the Business Association has been working on for, well, over 10 years, to put plaques on all the buildings downtown, from the top of the hill to the creek, that tells the story of what was on that piece of property, not so much the particular store or shop that's there now. We started this project, and it has had many fits and starts through the process. So much of it is being done by volunteers, and sometimes volunteers get tired or move away or give up or whatever. But we now have the first finished plaque, and we hope that before the end of the year, certainly beginning of the year, that we will have plaques on all the buildings downtown. There will be 45 plaques, starting at the Congregational Church, yes, Congregational Church, and down to the creek. There will be, they will, they're all made of Corian tile and in a one-inch steel, rusted steel frame. They, and then they're etched with the story and the drawing. And then the, and this, the, and then they will be attached to the building, working with John Bernasconi, who is a stone mason, concrete here, and Jim Tony, who, Man of Iron, who made all of the frames. They will be attached in a way that will not deface the facades. Each one of them, I mean, we have many facades downtown. Of the 35 or 40 buildings, there are probably 30 different types of facades, so they will be attached that way. This is DuPont Corian. It's basically indestructible, has no commercial value for anyone to steal. It's used in the City of Philadelphia for their historic plaques, and then it's etched. The engraver is in San Francisco. The pictures, the drawings are of the earliest known photograph or sketch of a building on that site. So it talks about the history of the site as opposed to just the building that's currently there. And then there are three areas of town that we determined, there was no place to hang a plaque, one being the parking lot, the Utica Hotel, and one at the Visitor Center parking lot, and then from Raspberry up to Church Street, that section. So we have had made four-foot-long display pieces like this that will be cemented into the ground, like you see in museums and that sort of thing. And it will have four of these tiles in there. And one will go in front of the Frog statue, one will go in the dirt strip between the paved parking lot at the Visitor Center and the sidewalk, and the third one will go on the building that has just been renovated up on, going up Main Street. And the reason for that is, first of all, we did not want to put a plaque on the Load Hotel. Second of all, there is no space on the one at the corner of Raspberry and Main. They have no space at all. And then the, to Sony's private home at the top of the hill. So we decided to put a four-foot plaque with four plaques in there that'll tell the story from Church Street to Raspberry, and it'll be directly opposite the street from the one at the Visitor Center. So those three are a little bit different. And then there will be a sponsor's plaque on a building downtown that will highlight all the sponsors that have been part of that. So that's, basically, we are in the process of finishing all the artwork, which has taken quite a bit of research to try to find pictures of all, the earliest known picture of all the buildings downtown. And Judith Marvin, who did the Facade Brandt historical research for downtown, wrote the first draft of all the write-ups, and then with Kristi Reesman and I. And we've been enlisting people who know a lot about Angels Camp, and every day, there's something else that has to be corrected or added to, or someone says, oh, I thought it was built in 1895. Our records show 1905, so we're working our way through that. And right now, I'm in the process, we have 12 new owners downtown. All the owners of the buildings have signed letters of agreement, indemnifying the city, ACBA, everybody, putting the plaque on their building. But we had 12 new owners. All of them, to date, have said yes. I'm just trying to get the signed document in my hands. And then we will notify them when we put the plaques on. Any questions?
What the timing, do you think, for the first ones to be installed?
ASAP. We've been saying that for a long time. But no, really, I'm not sure, because of the engraver, he works at the big jewelry store down on Union Square in San Francisco. We're now in his busiest time of year for engraving Christmas gifts and stuff. But he can do two, maybe three of these a day. But first, we have to finish all the text and get it to the designer at Foothill, and then it goes to him. So I'm hoping that we might be able to get them up before Christmas. If not, it'll definitely be in January, and we'll have an unveiling or something. That'd be great. There's been a lot of in-kind donations, tens of thousands of dollars in time. And John Bernasconi is, we have, charging us for the cost of the materials that he'll use, but he's donating his time and doing it after work hours because he's very busy. Jim Tony donated all his time to make all the stands. Bartel's donated all their time to cut the tile. Judith Marvin, 300 hours of research or something like that, Kristi and I, all the artists. And then we have had good donations from the community, and we're, because we added 15 new plaques, originally, it was just going to be from Raspberry to Bird's Way. And then we thought, let's do the whole, the whole street. So we are still fundraising for more sponsors.
I was thinking, this is such an enormous undertaking that you have done and that so many people have contributed to. I don't think we'll ever be able to kind of reach out and show the appreciation and recognize all of those who have really done this for the, for the historical downtown. I think it's very positive for the downtown. If we can get the walking tour on top of that, it could be, something would really draw a lot of tourism without having spent, you know, have spent a lot of, not a time, not as much money as you have donations, but it's something that maybe could be done without, you know, enormous amount of financial, you know, financing of it. So anyway, I, you know, I, of course, have a very deep affection for history and for the Gold Rush days and for the downtown, so, you know, just great applause, yes. I'm dancing.
Let's hope we applause till I actually get up on the walls.
I'll be dancing on the streets. If I could still dance, I would be dancing on the street at that time. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming. Item B, presentation by Bartle Wells Associates. This is a presentation on the wastewater, water and waste rate study and the financial for the public info.
Good evening.
Do you have the PowerPoint? Do you need us to put it up?
Yes, I do. Do you have it on this computer or?
Oh, we don't have it if you brought it.
Okay, I've got a thumb.
Perfect.
Our firm was hired to do the water and wastewater rate analysis for the cities of Angels Camp. So today, I kind of want to have sort of a discussion, where you can go ahead and interrupt me if there are any questions or clarifications on our presentation today. We're going to go over objectives on your water and wastewater rates. We're going to talk about the background on current rates, issues with legal compliance, any key issues with your rates, look at a regional rate survey, and talk about Proposition 218 procedures for actually going out and adopting the rates. So the objectives today are to introduce the BWA project team. My name's Michael DeGroot. I've been with Bartle Wells for five years doing water and wastewater rate studies across California. And I also have with me Douglas Dove, who is a partner at Bartle Wells. So our objective also is to provide an overview of the key issues regarding the rates and finances and receive any feedback and policy direction. And then we will come back in November with a draft of the rates. So the first study is the water rate study, and here's kind of a background on your water rates. So the rates were last implemented in August of 2009, so it's been about 10 years since there's been a rate increase. And since then, there has been a 2013 Water Master Plan completed that identified about $24.25 million of capital improvements over 20 years. Based on city staff, we estimate that you've completed only about $1.7 million of this program in the distribution system. But there's been no improvements to the water supply capital program. In addition, there have been a couple of recent legal developments. There's a San Juan Capistrano decision that affect kind of the way we think about water rates in California, and those will come into play looking at your rates. With that, let's take a look at the City of Angels Camp's current water rates. The water rates are composed of two main components. You have a fixed monthly meter rate, which varies based on meter size. So the smallest meter in the city is a 3/4 inch by 5/8 inch meter, and customers inside the city are charged $39.75 a month. Customers outside the city are charged $75.31. And that monthly rate increases based on the size of the meter, all the way up to a six-inch meter, which you can see is $502.11 per month. So that's the first component of the rates. And the second component is a volumetric rate, which varies based on water usage. So you've got three tiers, and customers that use water in the first tier don't pay anything per unit. And the unit is per 100 cubic foot, which is about 748 gallons. Customers in the second tier, which is 11 to 1500 cubic foot per month, will pay about $1.08 per 100 cubic foot, and any usage above 1600 cubic foot pay $1.62 roughly. And then there's a flat rate per additional unit for multifamily buildings of $27.91. So moving on, looking at legal compliance. Water rates, the code that applies to property-related charges in California- Water rates, the code that applies to property-related charges in California is Article 13D Section 6, also known as Proposition 13. And they kind of outline some guidelines and for the rates, such as revenues cannot exceed the cost of providing the service, they can only be used for the purpose for which they're collected, the charge shall not exceed the proportional cost of the service attributable to each parcel, and can only be imposed if used by or immediately available to the property, and no charge may be imposed for general governmental services available to the public at large, such as police or fire. So that's kind of the basic idea of Prop 218. But in recent years, we've had some court cases decided. In 2011, there was a decision, the Palmdale Decision, where rates have to be, basically rates were not equitable between the customer classes in this case, and that determined that agencies must demonstrate satisfactory to a court's independent judgment that the rates meet the proportionality requirement. And then further, there was a case in 2015, which decided that tiered rates must reflect the cost basis. And so essentially, you need to have a cost justification for each tier and each rate that's charged for that tier.
Excuse me, Michael. The proportionality, can you talk about what, what that means? I understand the 15, the San Capistrano, but the Palmdale decision, what do you mean of customer classes? What do you mean by that? And what about proportionality? How would that affect us?
Right. So proportionality means that the costs have to be evenly distributed amongst the customers. You can't have one customer class with a different, you know, tier threshold than another class. It has to be kind of proportional to the cost of service.
So what would be a class example?
So, for example, an agricultural user versus a single-family residential versus multifamily commercial.
Wow, okay.
The costs need to be proportional. And in terms of how that might affect the city, that's a good segue into my next slide here. So there's a couple of issues when we look at the current rate structure. And one of them is that you need a cost basis for the outside-city charge. And that's due to the proportionality requirement that was established. Your rates currently have a large differential between inside-city and outside-city customers. And in order to justify that, we need a cost basis. So that's one possible issue. The second, a second possible issue is that the tiers need to be cost justified. And currently, you have a tier that doesn't pay anything for the first 10 units. The city really only has one source of water supply. And so all water is kind of purchased at this, a single-unit rate. So that is one of the issues that we're looking at as well. And then, as far as financial issues, the water enterprise is not funding a capital improvement program or funds for vehicle and equipment replacements. So based on those issues, we've got some preliminary recommendations. We're recommending eliminating the outside-of-city charge because the amount of outside customers is, and revenue is very small, and the out-of-city costs are difficult to quantify. And we're also recommending the city charge a uniform rate for each unit of usage to comply with 218. And as far as the financials, we're recommending raising rates to adequately cash fund about $1 million a year of capital expenditures.
So you're suggesting no tiered approach to billing?
Right, exactly. Because you only have one source of supply, we think it makes the most sense to just have a uniform rate for all usage, and that would be very legally compliant.
How many customers are on our roll? Am I getting $1 million divided by what?
I'm not sure the exact number.
1700?
1700.
So what's $1 million divided by 1700?
Well, he's got a rate structure in the back of this, suggested a percentage increase.
Actually, my next slide has the revenue requirements.
I want to ask a question about the rates. Do not include administrative, but things don't they include?
So the, the rates are all-inclusive of your operating costs. So in terms of what's funded from your water rates, you've got, you know, salaries, wages, benefits, the Utico water and power contribution that you pay, if there's any during that year, rents, leases, utilities, equipment. So your, your rates will cover operating, and it will cover the capital costs, such as debt service and vehicles. So it should cover basically everything to run that enterprise.
Thank you.
So as far as what that looks financially, we were projecting 8% increases over the next five years. And so you can see on this slide that currently, the water enterprise is collecting about $1.5 million in water service charges. And that would go up to about $2.5 million, based on our recommendation, in fiscal year 2023, '24. And this would fund all of your operating needs, it would fund a vehicle replacement set aside, and capital improvement projects of about $1 million a year.
So how do we think about the increase in terms of looking at a bill today that's got a fixed rate and a variable depending on the tiered levels? When you say 8%, what do you tell a homeowner about what they should expect on their bill?
Right, that's a good question. We'll come back in November with draft rates, and we'll have bill impacts for the average customer based on this. But essentially, it's an 8% increase each year for the next five years, and, and it's about $700,000 in additional revenue.
So you're saying that 1718, the $1,497, is a, is a result of the current rate structure?
Right, exactly.
And to get to $1,406, there'll be an adjustment in the structure and the billing rates?
Right.
To get to this extra 100 and 1/4 that we need from that first year?
Right, and we factored in about half a percent a year of growth as well.
Has that got some historical basis for, it does?
Yeah, it's kind of just a conservative projection. We want to kind of err on the, the low side with growth projections.
So back to the beginning, rates, what, in this new scenario, you're suggesting, whether it's a 5/8 meter or a 6 inch meter, rates are the same?
Well, we're just talking about revenue for now.
Okay.
But the rates do need to be proportional. And when we come back in November, we'll have proposed rates, meter charge and volumetric charges. So that, this is my last slide, I believe, for water. Here's actually the water rate survey to kind of show you where you are in the region and how Angels Camp compares. Based on our survey, you're on the low side for water. The average in the survey was about $50.51. And it's important to note that a lot of these agencies, a lot of your neighbors are also experiencing the need for increases, and will be going up as well. So any last questions or comments on the water rates? Moving on to wastewater. So just like water, the wastewater rates were last increased in February 2009. The 2012 Master Plan identified about $11.3 million of capital projects over 20 years, and city staff has identified an additional $150,000 per year in repairs and replacements. And as of currently, no sewer lines identified have been replaced, including the most critical projects identified in the Master Plan. This slide shows you your current wastewater rate. For a single-family residence, it's $71.92 a month. For a commercial, it's $90.95 a month. There is no additional charge for out-of-city customers, and apartments, as well as mobile home units, pay the same rate as the single-family residential user. For other institutions, you have a volumetric charge based on cost per gallon. So here's some key issues with the current wastewater rates. We're recommending that the rates be set based on flow and strength characteristics. Typically, multifamily and mobile home units have lower flow characteristics than sing, than single-family homes, and currently, they're all charged the same rate. And then when it comes to commercial, the flow and strength will vary based on customer class. For example, offices have less strength than residential, while restaurants have higher So we're recommending that the city charge customers based on these estimated flow and strength characteristics.
Can you explain flow and strength, what that is?
Right. So flow is how much volume is going into the wastewater system, whereas strength is sort of the contaminants in the water, such as suspended solids, bio-oxygen demand, that place more load on your wastewater treatment plant.
Is sampling necessary to establish this, or is there some industry standards that are generally accepted?
There are industry standards that we'll base it on. We use the state revenue guidelines for that.
So.
I'm sorry?
Okay. So with the multifamily and mobile home units typically have lower flow, what does that mean as far as how the pay scale goes?
Right. So we would look at that when we calculate our rates, but we anticipate that they would pay less because they're placing less of a strain on your system.
Okay.
Is that based on the typical number of people per household?
Right.
On apartments, is less the number of people household on a single-family?
Yes, exactly. It really comes down to indoor usage. So you have less people in a mobile home than a single-family home, so, and there's less fixture units, so you have less flow. So for wastewater, we recommend raising rates to cash fund about $750,000 a year, plus an additional $150,000 a year of repair and replacements.
So.
How far, go ahead.
So this is another 900, this is basically another $1 million. I'm looking at that, that equates probably around $50 bucks a month per person, or per household?
I can't say right now.
On average.
Because we haven't gone and calculated the rates.
Is this, is this additional, or is this bring, bring it up to this, or we have?
Well, we'll see here on the next slide how much revenue you're currently collecting. $1.9 million, and that will go up to about $3 million in FY 2022, '23. So it's about $1.1 million more per year.
So we need to come up with another $1.1 million for this wastewater and another million for the water?
Right.
So if I'm doing my math at all right, that's 100 and change a month per household incremental increase?
Right. We'll, we'll look at what that means, you know, for the typical user in November when we come back. And we can also run financial scenarios with debt to bring down the rates if the increases are too high.
Are these numbers reflective of how old our system is? I mean, how far does the 100, how far do these dollar amounts actually get in terms of where we're at and where we should be with, with our replacement?
Right. Well, it's important to remember that there hasn't been an increase in about 10 years here, and so you have.
And I recognize that.
Right.
But even if we do these increases, is the city still going to be where it should be to even invest 100, I mean, to me, $150,000 isn't enough with the amount of the piping that needs to be done, just for example, downtown? I mean, are, are these reflective of the actual cost that we, or are we just trying, I mean, or is this just to show revenue coming in so we can start those processes?
And so you can start? Because are you going to go over the cash flow projections?
Well, right now, I'm just kind of talking about the revenue requirements.
Okay. Because even with this proposed revenue increase and these capital investments at this level, recognizing we haven't increased rates for 10 years, which is a substantial period of time, and two, we have not invested in the capital infrastructure improvements that we identified in our 2012 plan as being critical and necessary. So, and on top of that, we've been deficit spending to sustain operations. So even with the cash flow projections and these revenue increases, we will continue to deficit spend it for a period of time.
Okay, that's what I.
And it's necessary in order to get some of these replacement projects moving when I look at those cash flow projections. So correct me if I'm wrong, but, and then I think too, the reason for not talking specifically about the rates is just really to educate and inform the council on the status of the system, the current rate structure, and the issues that are affecting it today. And then also to get your policy direction so that we can move forward with that rate determination and that presentation and discussion. So I think also, that's your goal and objective. But we're, we're coming at this way behind the eight ball, really. And even with this increase, when you look at those cash flow projections, it will take us four years, I think, to get caught up.
Back, back in the timeframe when these studies were done, we were, the city administrator at the time was basically, in my opinion, kind of a pie-in-the-sky guy. He was going for everything he could get. The traffic studies were a perfect example of that, where the traffic studies that we're paying for now, you know, we're basing our mitigation fees on, if they come to fruition, we're going to have 13 traffic lights in Angels Camp. So my question's going to be on this study, this, this, all this infrastructure and all this capital improvements that we need, how much is it really need, or how much is a wish list from an administrator back then who was kind of swinging for the fences on everything he did?
Well, we're taking your master plans and looking, and those master plans project the system needs for the next 20 years. And we're looking at what financially you need to actually fund that amount of capital. And you're already, you know, five years behind.
My question is, if when you look at that master plan, how much of that master plan is need-driven in your opinion, or how much of it is kind of a, boy, perfect, perfect situation kind of report?
Right.
I question the reports because the money is going to be, is, this is a brutal.
Right. We're, we're not engineering estimates, so we talk to, you know, the city staff and get the best information that we can. And currently, the City of Angels is, does not have a capital improvement program, which, from our experience, that is very problematic in the long run. And so from our experience, when we see situations with a lot of deferred maintenance, eventually, you'll get to a point where you have to do something. And by then, you're looking at a 60% rate increase. So we're already a little bit behind, but it's not as bad as we've seen with some of the other agencies in the region, where they're doubling their rates overnight. So I think it makes sense to move in this direction where you're funding a set amount of capital each year from cash.
Can we stay, with the legal boundaries that we, you know, have with the sidewalks, are we allowed with this revenue to save it and work it towards a project in the following year, you know, kind of a?
Right.
Okay.
As long as you can identify capital projects and expenses, then you can save the money.
Okay. Okay.
Is the deferred maintenance worse in wastewater than in the water?
Well, for water, you've got about 24 million of master plan improvements, and wastewater is about 11.3 million, but the fund balance is a lot better in water.
Water has a better fund balance, doesn't it? Does the governor's new water regulations, I haven't really studied it, I just kind of heard bits and pieces, I haven't read it yet, will that have any effect?
Which, which specific ones?
Well, there's something about controlling how many gallons of water everybody can use, and how often you can water your grass, and there's all kinds of things that have been coming up.
Reducing our flow.
Yeah, reducing our flow, which I haven't studied, I just, I've only heard, as I say, I've heard bits and pieces, I didn't have time to dig into it.
Yeah, well, recently, we had a, a major drought in California, and the governor released sort of a mandatory cutback for each agency, but that only really applied to larger cities. I think you had to be like 10,000 or above. So the city of Angels would not have been required to cut back.
No, I'm going to get it. So I, I guess it's back to, if you're looking at $24 million in the water fund and 11 million in the wastewater, it's $35 million of capital improvement projects. I gotta go back to, I think we need to take a closer look at that study. That sounds like a lot of money. Do we really need 35 million, and, and how, is that over 20 years, is that...
Yeah, that's over 20 years, and we're not the engineering experts, but, you know, from a financial perspective, I think it's, it doesn't seem excessive to us in terms of capital programs.
Is 218 has no direct effect on the wastewater rates?
Well, you're still under the proportionality requirements of 218, but you don't have tiers on your wastewater rates, so some of those recent court cases aren't, don't apply for tiers.
So on this survey, we're a little above the average on that, huh?
Right, and here's our, the wastewater survey, and the average was 65. And it looks, the city of Angels is about $70 a month, so you're a little bit above average for the region. And again, we've seen major increases in a lot of agencies surrounding Angels Camp.
We've already, we've already seen increases, so they're already reflected in the chart?
Yeah, well, they've done kind of five-year plans. Some of the bigger ones are, that we know about, Yosemite West and Groveland.
Like CCHWD?
We're not totally familiar with all the agencies, but we've worked for some of them and experienced large increases.
Now, Calaveras County, theirs is very high. Has that increased, was that done quite a while back?
Not, not sure. We can look into, you know, if you'd like, the, how recently that was increased.
So I know that was one of the areas that we talked about, because when we first connected, they were in the process of going through a rate increase. And so I see that now it's 2018. So I think it would be good just to go back and make sure that, is that their current rate increase reflected in that amount, or, or not?
Yeah, this, this survey was conducted a couple of months ago, so it should be for this fiscal year, FY 18.
Can you talk a little bit about the debt service that's reflected? I noticed we had some in the detail on ours, but it's not reflected in the chart, so...
Yes, so... For wastewater, there's an existing 2017 USDA loan agreement, and that will go through March 2032, and it's about 164,000 a year. And there is a State Department of Water Resources wastewater loan, which is about $16,000 a year.
Do we know, does anybody have the institutional memory to know why we borrowed that?
The first one, is that a refi, is that the refinance we did last year?
Yeah, we just refinanced it.
We lowered, we, we lowered the term, we reduced the interest rate, and we also reduced the term to 15 years.
The debt, the debt service right now is currently at the pinnacle, which was refinanced for the USDA loan.
But do you know what the project was, it drove the need for the loan in the first place?
No.
So there's a little debt service on both the water and the wastewater?
Yep, and then the water has the State Department of Water Resources loan that's about $75,000 a year, and there's, it's a no-interest loan, which is great.
We'll get that information.
One second. The, one of the, there are actually two water resources loans, one of which is interest-free and the other one, which will kick in interest expense starting next fiscal year.
How much is that? Do you know how much that is, the loan is?
The combined, it's about 70, I thought.
Oh, the combined, oh, okay.
In the, in the contribution to the joint powers authority with, is, is that, in the study that you're looking at, are you looking at the same amount going forward in the contribution, or are you looking at something greater?
Right, so I spoke to Michael, who works at the Utica, and essentially, in between six and two, six months and two years from now, he should have, he's expecting to have a power contract approved that will kind of eliminate the large transfers that have been made in recent years.
How long ago was that conversation?
It was yesterday.
Okay.
So you currently pay about $40,000 a year fixed, and then any, you know, extra revenue that they need, because power sales aren't covering their costs, you would transfer to them. So we've built in about $65,000 a year in the out-years for that cost.
With our current water rate, can we put it in?
I think we're paying 80 now.
We're doing 80, 80?
Is it 80?
It's 80, it's been 80, I know in total, the last couple of years, it's been like over, almost close to 250,000 or something that we've given them.
No, you're right, 100, about 180, yeah. It's almost, it's almost 200,000 you were paying now.
Yeah.
Right, and I think for this year, he estimates 175, but he's expecting a power contract to be approved, you know, six months to two years from now, that will cover the total expenses, except for the $40,000 that you were paying annually fixed.
Who knows where the legality is going to be with the PVC on that one?
I think Joe and I both serve on that, on that commission, on that committee, and I think it's, if, if we get that remat contract, I think it'll get us to where we can almost break even in a really good water year. And that's not adding a whole lot of expenses more for, for, you know, for all the retirement stuff, and all the, you know, increased expenses as we go. So, but if it's an off-retire, if it's an off-water year, we're still going to have significant expenses.
Right.
Which I, on that, my question is, can we put in tier charges to ratepayers based on what water year we're in, to help supplement those tiers? So if we're in water year this, then they should be expecting that the rates for that are going to go up reflective of the year. I know, didn't Mofe do that?
The reason, the reason that that's an important discussion is because we have two power plants that are on our, our water delivery system that we use, and we generate power, we use the, the revenue from the power to offset the cost of the water delivery. So in a water year one, which is great, we have all the water we need, we're going to do a lot better and require less money from the city or from the partners than we would in a water year six. So a tiered billing program would actually, would be justifiable. So if we're in a drought-type year, you know, your water's going to go up, but in a, in a good year, in a normal year, your water bill's not going to be as high.
Right, I, I think there are some ways to kind of create sort of theoretical supplies with theoretical costs. But legally, I think the safest option would do just kind of a uniform rate, because we really don't know if you're going to have to pay extra for that water, because it's all dependent on the electricity sales. So our recommendation currently is just to go for a uniform rate, and, you know, it's simple and effective.
And on the flip side too, we also have FERC licensing coming up, too. I mean, how, if partners are having to contribute, it's based out of this UPA rate of having to fund them to get our water.
Right, right now, we're setting aside, is it 80 to 100,000 dollars a year for FERC licensing requirement? That's, we don't know, I think it's probably a million three to a million five tag, and it's coming up in, within eight or nine years, I think, I'm not sure. So we're not really setting enough aside for that now. There are things we're working on to try and mitigate that, but those are costs, those are costs that, again, aren't going to be covered by the remat program. And I think to ease the burden on the citizens, I'd hate, I'd want to base our costs on a water level five, when half the time we're in water level two, and our costs aren't, aren't that great. So I don't know how you're going to come up with the costs, and you, you, the UWPA is a huge, huge contributor to those costs.
I think the, the difficulty is in projecting forward what those costs are going to be, and it's, it's difficult to set your rates based on, you know, water years, when, you know, that changes from year to year, we don't know what it's going to be, so...
That's kind of, that's kind of the point. They'll come out with their water year in May, they'll tell you how, you know, what your water year is, and then we can make our adjustments accordingly.
You know, at a minimum, maybe in, in the report in November, you pay some special attention to a fairly detailed discussion around what that whole JPA thing means, and, you know, give Michael another shot at, you know, explaining the ups and downs of water years and, and power generation and, you know, all of that stuff, and make sure that's included and it's given a thorough, you know, once-over in the analysis.
Will do. So I think that was it for the wastewater. And I just wanted to talk about the Prop 218 process. So Proposition 218 establishes a procedure for the ratepayers to adopt the proposed rate increases. You adopt a rate study, setting forth a proposed rate and methodology, set a public hearing date, and mail a notice to all the ratepayers at least 45 days before the public hearing. That notice will identify the proposed rate increase, explain the reason for the increase and how it's calculated, and explain how to submit a written protest against the proposed rate increase. Public outreach and education will be critical to ensure that the ratepayers understand the proposed rates and methodologies before the hearing. Then the city will hold the public hearing, invite public comment, tally written protests, and if more than 50% of affected parcels submit written protests, the council cannot go forward with the rate increase. If 50% or less of the affected parcels submit written protests, then the council can go forward with the rate increase.
In a situation where, say that 50%, we get, we get enough objections where we can't go forward, but at the same time, we're violating Prop 218 with our existing structure, how does that, how do we figure that out?
Right, well, essentially, you need to mail another notice and start the process over again, and, you know, work with the citizens. Usually, we recommend setting up a citizen advisory committee to kind of hear out all the concerns, get people on board, and then mail out another notice.
The, to Scott's point about the 24 million and the 11 million for the two groups, I guess, Melissa, what's the potential to have that scrubbed and looked at and reevaluated for the purposes of this study? If, if, if what Scott is saying is really the way that it went about it, and we've got things in there that were pie in the sky, then it's driving the number in the wrong direction. Is there any way to get that scrubbed quickly?
Yeah, so I can sit down with Matt, we could take a look. I wouldn't necessarily recommend you go back and redo your rate study. I don't think we have the time nor the money. We're deficit spending in wastewater this year.
I'm just talking about the projects that were listed that drove the 24 million.
So I think we could take a look at it, but from what I'm hearing, there's been a prolonged lack of investment. So from my perspective, just the water treatment plant project that we're working on with Blackwater right now has the potential to be almost $4 million, and that's one identified project. So, and it's critical and necessary. I, we'll, we'll go back, we'll dig through them, we'll make sure we have an answer to you before we come back in November with that response. But from what I hear from staff, is that there's been more need for many years, not just since the 2012 studies were complete. And my goal is to get that CIP going, and identify those critical projects. But that's the best I can do right now, and I'm, I'm just not sure we're in a place where I would recommend slowing this down at all, in order to revisit those master plans.
So if this went forward as is, we're talking about a 45, after November, we're looking at, assume we just adopted it the way you recommended, and we're looking at 45 days out for the first public hearing, is there more than one required in that process?
No, does the city adopt by resolution? Yeah, so it would just be one public hearing and adopt the rates.
So best-case scenario, these rates could be considered in the next fiscal year budgeting if, if it all went through that way, correct?
So I will come back, we'll review those plans, we'll identify what the critical projects are, if there's anything that we consider pie in the sky in terms of investments over the next 20 years, but knowing what we haven't done over the last 15 years, I don't think, starting there and moving 20 years forward, the $35 million that we've identified, but I could be wrong. We'll bring that back.
So we don't slow down the process, though? We should move forward on this?
I wouldn't recommend slowing down the process.
We shouldn't slow down the process, we should go ahead with that, while you do those studies.
I wouldn't recommend slowing down the process. I mean, from your perspective, we're not sustaining operations day-to-day based on current rates.
No.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, I think this is sort of like the solid waste discussion, when, you know, are we really doing citizens any favors by not bringing back rate increases for such a prolonged period of time, versus revisiting them more, more frequently or with annual rate increases built in? We're sort of finding ourselves backed into a corner. But I think there are good questions. I think when we go to the taxpayer and we bring together the rate increase, we have to be able to put to bed the pie-in-the-sky comments that we, we stand behind these studies and we validate the projects that are behind them. So I, we will do that, we will come back, and it'll be the priority that I get Matt on with Weber here.
Yeah, if we're asking for a significant increase, we'd better be able to tell the public exactly what they're getting for and why, so that's...
And how would they tell it all with the Citygate?
Citygate, we are under administrative review, but their recommendation is move quickly to find revenue, and that the city has two to three years before we've fallen off the fiscal cliff. And so water and wastewater needs to be an area of specific focus, not just the general fund.
And then going forward with this, before, when you bring it back in November, is there partnership with Michael, Utica Water?
Yes.
To help educate the public, you know, because there's, there's more than just this, there's also that whole entity that, you know, goes into this discussion tonight that I think the public needs to be aware of. And I know he's done public outreach, he did it last year, the year before, and it was very well-received, and it kind of had a light bulb go off on a, a lot of individuals that didn't realize how everything was tied into each other.
So we, as staff, have made the recommendation that we invite Mike to our project team, our staff administrative team. project team, our staff administrative team, so that he sees all of this information as an administrative level. And then I do know that our consultants have reached out to him and also solicited information, so we definitely want to work closely with Mike.
Okay, good.
Another point, I think people should understand, I think if I'm reading this right, I think I recall this, in two thousand nine, when the, the last time that this, the, uh, rates were visited, they dropped them fourteen or fifteen dollars a month. So, if you, in this chart, it shows in, in February seventh, for example, the smallest amount was forty-three, fifty-one, and in, in oh-eight, they went to forty-seven, oh-nine to fifty, in ten, they went to fifty-three, and then back in oh-nine though, it says thirty-nine. I don't know what's.
Yes, I think that is correct.
We did reduce them, so they went up in ten, then we dropped them back to.
Yes, that's what I understood.
So, probably needs to understand that too.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then I would. Is that your understanding, that we decreased rates when we did do them in two thousand nine?
Yes, and that's very unusual. We usually don't see that.
Yeah, right. That's very unique. You're right. Wasn't, wasn't a good idea, I think.
Um, I have one other question. Um, if we were to, had to run city access to water into outside the city limits, you, to, for example, towards the fairgrounds, in this proposal, you're saying not charging, so I'm kind of not understanding why we wouldn't charge someone who would be on city infrastructure if they were outside the city limits. And not just one example, I know there's other examples in the city, but how would we mitigate that based on what you said unless I misunderstood that?
Right. So, we kind of developed our recommendate, recommendations, speaking with the city staff, and we asked if they had any sort of cost justification where, you know, why is the out-of-city rate so much higher? And they could not provide us with that information. And typically, you know, you get these very large rate differentials and it may create affordability problem as well.
Okay. So, any specific direction or action that you need from council to guide your presentation in November?
Right. Um, maybe just some feedback in terms of, um, going to a uniform rate with the water. We can pursue looking at maybe a two-tiered structure based on, uh, the source of supply as another option. Just any feedback on that.
A two-tiered structure based on what?
Based on your supply situation.
Per year.
Using kind of the water years and taking a look at that. I know that was brought up.
Why, why two and not three or four? There's six different water levels, one maybe three, and why, was two kind of arbitrary or is that just a?
Well, I think it's, um, maybe more legally, legally defensible to look at what costs are associated with excessive use versus normal baseline use. Um, I don't think it's particularly helpful to have three or four tiers. I think two tiers can.
You're not talking about water level years, you're talking about use?
Use, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause there, I think there'd be concern is making sure that we're working with Mike to account for those increases in cost depending on water level years and how, how we're going to stabilize that over a prolonged period of time, given the fluctuations. Do you have any recommendations for that?
Yeah, when there's risk-like fluctuations involved, we typically recommend, um, developing a fund with cash to just stabilize that, those fluctuations.
I'd just like to say, thanks for bringing this forward.
Yes.
You know, we've been asking for it for a long time and, uh, this may not be great news at first flush, but it's something that's long overdue and thanks for putting the work together.
Yes.
Well, we wanted to get, um, Bartow and Wells in front of you to kind of identify what they knew so far and then, um, hopefully get some input to guide the release of the rates when we come back in November with that information.
So, have you got everything you need from the city staff to get to wherever you need to be in November?
Yes, yeah, we'll be back with.
So, we should talk about then some kind of fund to stabilize those costs with UWPA?
Right. And I think Michael was talking about having a fund internally that would do that as well.
Okay.
And then I think Amy had something.
Just a quick question. Uh, our general plan has some guidance for affordable housing and addressing things like water, sewer, either capital improvements or rates, and one of the things it would be helpful to have in this study is to address why we can or cannot have incentives for builders of affordable housing to adjust their rates and also the idea of a single rate for water. It, it might be difficult to argue in updates of our housing element that we're charging the same rate for a single-family residence as for a mobile home or for an apartment, especially an affordable one, which would tend to use less water. So, just to throw that out as something that, if that could be addressed, that would be great. I realize there are some legal issues involved, but to the extent that perhaps others of your, um, clients have found a solution, we would love to know what they were, so that's all I have.
That brings to mind too, that what we just, what we're going through with regard to the PG&E discount structure and, um, Cal Waste, is, is there some component to this that addresses low-income people and, uh, you know, an outright discount?
You know, I think that's interesting because I think CCWD has, has created a program for people, so maybe we could do some research into that for low-income or affordable housing as to how we can accommodate or what programs there are to accommodate. I'm not quite sure how they're funding it and if you can use sort of rate payer fees to, who funds the discount, you know, that's, that's kind of what I'm wondering.
Right. That, that goes to the proportionality requirement that we talked about earlier. You can't use rate revenue to fund a low-income discount program, so those funds would need to come from not, what we call non-rate revenues. Something like late fees or if you have like a cell tower lease could be used as a source. You could also use general funds.
So, I think we should contact CCWD though, if you don't mind, and looking into how they're doing their program.
Okay.
And how they're funding it.
Will do.
I mean, the proportionality is, so, when you're looking at single-family versus an apartment, are you looking at the number of bathrooms or are you looking at the number of people who live there?
Right, but for wastewater, yes, uh, 'cause we're looking at indoor use. For water, we're kind of looking at the marginal cost per unit of water, which we expect to be the same for each customer.
So, wastewater is based on bathrooms or people?
It's based, it could be based on fixture units such as, you know, number of toilets or it could, you could look at number of people. There's multiple ways.
It's either, either or, it's not one, you can choose one way.
Right.
I see.
Who makes that choice? It's okay, 'cause I mean, for instance, my husband and I live in our house and yet, you know, when it was built, we had five kids and, and we have a lot of bathrooms.
Right, and that, that's a good point that people make. Uh, you know, it's a policy decision whether you want to do it based on kind of an average for that customer class or you could have like a volumetric component to the wastewater rate based on usage or you could look at fixture units. Uh, all of those we would consider defensible.
So, what, what was your recommendation moving forward?
So, our recommendation as far as the wastewater rates is to charge a fixed sewer rate based on average industry standard for each customer type.
Okay. Yeah, on the average use.
Average use, is that right?
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I can deal with that.
Okay, good.
Okay, so we don't have to have a bureaucracy or create something, a system to figure out how many people live in this house and how many people do you have over on Christmas and.
That'd be pretty interesting.
Yeah.
If I remove two of my toilets, can I get a lower bill? I can still fill the hole. I'll fill the hole.
Yeah, we're getting kind of.
Okay, so, we'll be back in November.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
If they hadn't dropped those rates in two thousand nine, if it's continued incrementally, it wouldn't be a problem.
I can't believe it. It'll still be a problem.
Okay. Item D, uh, public hearing, um, this is not reading an adoption of ordinance number four-eight-five. Amy.
Madam Mayor, uh, council members, this is the second reading of the ordinance to rezone. Previously, you actually approved the remainder of the tractor supply project, so all conditions of approval are already set. Um, we're just looking at a second reading of the rezoning period. And I stay with the recommendations we made at the last city council meeting and we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from the council? Is there any, okay, with that, then I'm going to go ahead and open it to public hearing.
Good evening, Members of the City Council, Scott Patterson again from California Gold Development, and we're excited about the project and just here tonight, we've got a conference less than sixty seconds. So, we just ask for your support of a zoning change from suburban commercial to business and attraction, and, uh, we're excited about the project and we need this step to move forward. So, we appreciate your support. A couple of weeks ago, we asked for your support tonight in the zoning change. I'm here to answer any questions too, if you have any.
Any control, no? Okay. Any other public comment before I close the public hearing? Nope, okay. Public hearing is closed. We'll bring it back to control. Um, if there's no other staff info, is there a motion?
No, I'll move, I guess if, uh, adopt the second reading ordinance four-eight-five.
We wait for second reading.
Yes, wait for the second reading.
It is second.
Second.
Matoli?
Yes.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item D, public hearing, um, this is being called by city council for the purpose of soliciting citizens used to set priorities for the potential submission of a CDBG application. And I would turn it over to Kay.
Good evening, Terry Cox, Cox Consulting. Um, I want to preface my comments by saying that I do have a sign-in sheet for anybody that's attending this public hearing and written comments regarding the city's community development block grant program can be addressed to City Hall. So, we have two items tonight.
I'm a little troubled hearing you, I wonder if you could push the mic just a little bit closer?
How's this?
That's really good.
Okay, so, we have, uh, two items this evening. Uh, the first one is the discussion of possible projects for the twenty-eighteen cycle of community development block grants or CDBG. Uh, this is funding that is distributed by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So, we are expecting a notice of funding availability for the twenty-eighteen cycle from HCD, could be any day now. Um, they give us slightly over seventy days to submit an application from the distribution of the NOFA. Uh, each jurisdiction can apply for up to three million dollars total. You can do two activities. Now, these activities can include housing, public works, community facilities, public services, uh, economic development programs like, uh, small business revolving loan fund, they call the enterprise fund, uh, large economic development projects, they call the over-the-counter program, and planning grants. So, since, uh, twenty-twelve, they have put all of these activities into one NOFA with the exception of the large economic development projects. So, all of this money will be distributed through this cycle that will be submitted probably the beginning of January. Now, uh, what makes a fundable application is one that is directed particularly at.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, what makes a fundable application is, uh, an activity that addresses a serious health and safety need. It should benefit lower-income households exclusively, if possible, if not as much as The project should be what they call shovel-ready, so this is particularly applicable to, uh, public works projects and community facilities, but it also applies to any other activity. They want all of the, uh, components of a successful program to be in place, so you should have capacity for the implementer, it should be clear who is going to get the benefit, you should be resolving whatever the health and safety issue is that you're supposed to be addressing.
Can these funds use, be used for infrastructure for low-income housing development?
Uh, possibly. Um, what you would need to have in that case is the money for the low-income housing development would need to be in place. So, if, say, you had a, a condition to a project that said, okay, now you have to, um, put in a water line or a sewer line or a stoplight or whatever it is, um, that could be a possible project, but the rest of it has to be in place.
Okay.
Now, one thing I wanted to mention is that the whole CDBG program is under redesign right now. They've been working on this for about a year. It looks like they've got another, maybe six months to go. Um, as a part of this redesign, one of the things that they are proposing, particularly for public works projects, is to have a pre-development fund that would cover the upfront soft costs, so your engineering and your environmental review, and once those tasks were completed, then you could come back without waiting a whole nother year to apply, but come back in and get construction funding, you know, pretty much right away. Now, this is a complete departure than how they've done it for, you know, thirty years, but, uh, it was particularly with the idea that, uh, it would have projects getting construction money that were actually shovel-ready and expenditures in the state of California are the absolute worst in the country, so this is a big problem for them right now. But, uh, it also addressed the issue of particularly small communities not having the money to do the upfront costs. So, it was a way to kind of level the playing field for smaller jurisdictions and larger ones. So, this is something that, uh, we're expecting to, uh, come into play in twenty-nineteen, but the exact timing on this is a little vague. I would say everything that HCD has been doing relative to the redesign has been behind schedule, so I'm not sure why this would be any different. But, uh, it would give you an opportunity to cover those upfront costs that you wouldn't otherwise have. Now, one other way that this would affect you is that, uh, all jurisdictions at this point have to have expended at least fifty percent or fifty-one percent of their outstanding funds in order to be eligible to apply again. So, if you apply in twenty-eighteen for some other activity, if you wanted to come back in in twenty-nineteen when this pre-development money was available, you might not be eligible to. So, you have to consider all of these possibilities in selecting your projects. Now, I'd be happy to answer any questions I can.
So, I, I have a question, uh, public service activity, funding for operating costs including labor. So, funding and sustaining city fire is always a goal of ours. Is there a capacity to apply for any funding that might help provide for labor costs associated with our fire department?
Well, uh, not this twenty-sixteen grant that we're closing out tonight, but, uh, one, you know, not quite ten years ago, did provide both a fire truck and staff costs. So, it is certainly an eligible cost. You have to make the same case for the public service that you would for, uh, any other activity that is, it is a serious health need, but they are. But they are more particular on the public services where they want close to 100% benefit for lower-income people. So, it's a little trickier when you're doing a citywide activity for that.
What is the standard for lower income? Is there a certain rate?
Yeah, it's 80% of county median income, and it's graduated by household size. I don't remember what the exact numbers for Angels are at the moment, but it's substantially higher than you would think.
So, in terms of where we would qualify within the city? If we were able to identify call rates within specific targeted areas, and then they qualify for that, could then we justify costs to support a position? How would we do that? How would we identify that population of people?
Well, if this is a position that's going to serve the entire city, I'm not sure you could do it.
And how do you do it with the fire truck and the operating costs?
They looked at it as an overall package. And the facility was competitive on its own, same way your 2016 fire truck was. You know, you had a very good case for health and safety based on the abused fire and all the effects from that. So, and in that category for community facilities, and this is also true for public works, a citywide benefit to lower income, and I think yours is around 65% based on the census data. So, having one that low is not as disqualifying as it might be for a public service by itself.
So, we're supposed to obviously take the public comments and review some suggestions for projects for further consideration. What are some projects that you can see? I know selfishly, I know a pet project that I have. You know, it's all low-income housing, and specifically for that, and we need infrastructure money. And that would bring probably 80 to 90 homes to the city. Is that, you know, that'd be a great example for us to further consider, as far as I'm concerned. What other types? If we can't do something citywide because we're trying to appeal to lower income, what are other type of projects?
Well, you have done projects that are citywide. I mean, it just depends on the category that you're competing in. So, like I said, your fire truck was a citywide benefit. It's considered, and don't ask me why, it's considered a community facility rather than a vehicle, like equipment. But under CDBG's definitions, they count fire trucks as facilities. So, you know, the benefit was 65% or thereabout. So, you can get money for that. But all of the other components of the application need to be in place. So, you can't have to wait for some other funding source, or land acquisition, or...
Environmental review.
Right. I mean, they want something that is as completely ready to go as possible, and you are competing with other projects that are.
So, are there suggestions that, there's so much that we need in the city, but are there suggestions that you have the, of a project that might fit that criteria?
Well, I know, and of course, we were talking about this earlier tonight, that you have a lot of water and sewer needs. Now, these can be fundable projects, but the principal thing that you need to make it competitive is some kind of enforcement action from whatever is the agency that oversees this. So, you know, on a sewer project, a notice of violation, or a cease and desist, or, you know, something from state health on your water system. If you don't have that outside agency saying, yeah, this is a really serious problem, and you need to fix it, you won't get the money.
If we have an enforcement action, but we're not environmentally cleared or designed, is it still competitive? Or do we still need to be environmentally cleared and designed with?
Right, well...
You talking about the reservoir?
Yeah, which one?
No, I've got a few more.
Well, we're, one thing we're considering is, or would like to consider, is extending our sewer to the fairgrounds. The fairgrounds has a state all over them about upgrading or updating their sewer system. Is that the type of, would that money for that project be appropriate for this type of money?
That would be a particularly tricky project. First of all, it's not within the city limits. Second, it's state-owned property. And third, you can't restrict the benefit to either city residents or low-income residents.
Other than that, it'd be a good idea.
That's right. This takes a lot of thought.
So, we are looking in researching alternative funding sources for the fairgrounds. So, we've had a meeting with them. We've got one funding source that we're researching now. I think we've sort of vetted this internally as staff. I think we've really got our eye on the prize for that 2019 cycle that's coming out, and the potential that we have to fund some pre-construction activities, environmental and design, and the real potential that we could have for a unified firehouse with Altavilla Maloney's and Angels Camp, I think is a potential. We are advancing the Blackwater project. We think that that's going to be construction ready in two years. We're researching alternative funding for that right now. But that's where we are in terms of what I have to bring forward for this cycle, maybe other than some fire equipment.
Well, what does any of that have to do with low income?
What's that? It's all eligible under this program.
It is, yeah.
They're all eligible under this program.
Okay.
From what we've talked about.
Yeah, anything that has a citywide benefit would at least hit that 65%. So, depending on the category you're competing in, and these compete against, you know, it's apples to apples. So, public services compete against other public services, public works compete against other public works, and they divide up the money based on the quantity of applications or the dollars that are applied for in each category. So, that way, you can be in a category where nobody scores very high and still get the money.
I mean, would we qualify for, like, for public works, for example, a new dump truck, you know, things like that? Could we, would those be projects that we could afford? I'm just using that as one example. I'm sure they have the backhoe.
So, you talked about the backhoe.
Yeah, anything you can drive, with the exception of the fire truck, is not eligible.
Okay.
How about playground?
Well, of course, you have used your program income, so repayments off your old housing loans, to renovate parks in the city in the past. They are not competitive for the competitive portion of the program because they're not considered a serious health or safety need.
So, can you say that again, the repayments from our housing loan program?
Right.
That we can utilize to do park improvements?
You can use it for any eligible CDBG activity.
Really? So, I don't have to put it back into the program, that housing program?
Now, the way I understood it, you had spent all your CDBG program income. Now, I believe you have some home program income, and that can only be used for the same activity.
Probably for a second, I might be getting a little break.
Yes, close. But I think all of the...
It is under the program.
The CDBG housing loans have been repaid. So, that money's gone.
I have a couple more questions on what could be qualified. On here, I see the ME section under economic development. Could that be something that the city could collaborate with Columbia College to, I know there's already the property within the city that they designed to have a location here to provide tech from the college. It doesn't have to be Columbia, but would that qualify?
Possibly.
Okay.
Quite a number of years ago, the city of Sonora did an educational center that was downtown, and they partnered with Columbia and UC Extension and a bunch of other people. So, they were able to do a program like that then. You have to screen for income, so, you know, that's another criteria. And you have to make the case that it is somehow a serious health and safety need. So, there might be ways to do that, but you couldn't just have it be wide open.
Yeah, okay. I mean, if you were to specify a specific field or tech, skill set to, okay. And then downtown, I know redevelopment is not affordable, but in terms of providing landowners access to fund to maybe paint, like, I'm seeing under public service activities, you know, providing supplies such as paint, or just basic upkeep for historical preservation due to health and safety of some buildings, windows coming out, for example. I mean...
I think they would consider that a stretch in terms of health and safety.
Okay. But is there anything in here that we could use for historical preservation type of things?
Historic preservation is not particularly competitive.
Not even all the water and sewer pipes underneath these buildings?
That's another story.
I mean, I'm trying, I'm trying to parse that, I mean, there's...
Okay. So, we think the one that funds the pre-construction activities is coming out in May.
That's what they're saying.
Okay, all right. I think we're going to be ready for that one.
Okay.
I think that's going to be a good round for us.
Okay. So, you want to do a public hearing?
Yes, please.
I do have a sign-in sheet for anybody that has comments.
Okay, they are open to a public hearing.
I guess I have to sign in. Amy Augustine, City Planning. This is actually a question for Terry. A private nonprofit, would it have to be city-sponsored for affordable housing to clean up a health nuisance and convert multiple units, no laughing, convert multiple units to affordable housing that are not currently affordable housing?
Terry, from the top, can you respond accordingly? Thank you.
Okay, so, basically, a not-yet-housing, trying to, a potential multifamily affordable housing complex that has a health nuisance that's been cited multiple times, could monies by a nonprofit be used, CDBG funds, to clean that up and convert it to permanent affordable housing?
Yes. When you have another entity involved, like a nonprofit, you do that through a subrecipient agreement? And, you know, they can be involved in a whole array of activities. Now, one thing I will mention is that that type of project is also eligible under the home program. And, you know, that's a substantial other funding source that you could consider.
And I think one we're looking to kind of work on.
This is also true for infrastructure and supportive housing.
Terry, maybe a question to you. So, in regards to over-the-counter economic development grants, is this part of this rounding, or is this cycle for 2018, or is that more of 2019, when they kind of get their new rules in order? Potential project, X amount were built up to this point, and they need just a little bit more funding to finish up their project? Kind of that over-the-counter economic development?
Well, the over-the-counter can be submitted at any time. So, at least through the 2018 cycle. Now, as I said, they're changing a lot of things about how the program will operate from 2019 forward. And one of the things that's in play is the timing on the over-the-counters. Historically, it's been, you know, as of the beginning of the fiscal year. Now, we have this much money until it runs out, or the year runs out, whichever. So, how long the money will be available once it's, the NOFA is issued in 2019 is still undetermined. So, the state's recommendation to us is get your projects in as soon as you can.
Any other public comment? Nope, okay. Probably the public hearing. Bring it back to control.
Yeah, maybe I should have stood up there and public comment on this, because I'm going to speak on behalf of Habitat for Humanity. If this can be, this money can be used for infrastructure, we need to put in the sewers, roads, gutters, sidewalks, all that kind of stuff, for development that can bring, we're looking at probably 80 to 90, depending how we work it out, homes, low-income, or affordable housing to the city. And all the permit fees and all the property tax increases and everything that people that brings in, I think that's something I'd like to see considered. If that works, with a nonprofit?
Yeah, as a nonprofit, that part would work. What would be difficult, based on, you know, what I have seen on prior Habitat projects, is the timing. Because you have to deliver the benefit within the grant term, which is about two or two and a half years. So, all of those units would need to be built within that time.
So, not just the infrastructure put in, and the maps created, and the...
They don't consider the benefit delivered until people are living in the houses.
And what is the cycle of these every year?
Yeah, well, based on past history, yes. So, however, they are trying to shift the NOFA date. You know, it's been in the fall this year, and last year, they're trying to push it back, like we were talking about for May. And the grantees have all pushed for a January NOFA, which would let you capture the earliest construction cycle for those projects. But what they're telling us that they're expecting for next year is May.
For public improvement, did that, could that include, for example, the annex? Like, the sidewalk area of the annex?
You know, again, I don't think that we have any plans for that, like, any design?
I know, but I mean, if we could find a planning design for that?
So, I don't think this is, what we said was it has to be shovel-ready.
Well, if you were talking about a planning grant, was that the question?
Sure, I guess.
Or, I, yeah, I'm just, anything, I guess, for the annex area?
Yeah, they're only funding planning grants if you're doing another activity as well.
What does that mean?
You'd have to apply for another larger activity besides the planning grant in order to get that funded. And could we tie that in?
Does it have to be a nexus between the two?
No.
So, a planning grant to help bring golf cart trails throughout the city in conjunction with the Angels Creek?
Yeah, so, I would... whether or not we, you know, make those priorities for this cycle when we have so many other competing objectives right now.
I think part of it right now too is just understanding what are we, what can we even be thinking about?
That's what I'm trying to, I can't hear a lot of no's.
I have no idea what to even put in perspective.
Which I think is okay. If we're not ready this round, I think that staff internally, we're looking at the May NOFA, and we're preparing that along the lines of current priorities. And so, if we don't have something that's shovel-ready right now, we've got a lot of transportation projects coming, Murphy's Grade Road, the active transportation's going into construction, you know, we've got Capello.
No, that's my, and that's my point. So, we have all these, all these projects coming up, and one thing, every meeting everybody talks, we talk about golf cart access to make this a golf cart-friendly town, and everybody likes the idea. And yet, there's no planning, there's no, no efforts been made to plan and to actually implement something like that. So, if there's a way to do a planning, get some planning money to help coordinate that with these other projects that we have, I think that's a, that is a need.
It is possible. Now, you would have to convince the state that, A, this was for local residents as opposed to people visiting the golf course.
It's clearly for local residents to be able to get around the community easier.
Well, yeah, but most, right, most low-income people don't have golf carts, so.
To bring business downtown.
Yeah, there can be many good reasons to do it without it meeting HCD's criteria.
It has to affect low, lower income, is that correct?
That's right.
It still has to be within that scope.
And they're very suspicious on planning grants of activities that are not clearly for local residents.
You know, be for economic development is the way I've always considered.
Well, economic development is sort of a, an animal unto itself, and for a planning grant for an economic development activity, you would want to be able to tie the benefit to jobs that would likely be created as a result. So, you know, just moving people around in and of itself, that's kind of a hard case to make.
You've got a community of about eleven hundred people that, once they get in their car, they drive to Murphy's to go to dinner. If they get in a golf cart, they go to, they'll stay local. I mean, it's a, it's a hu, it would be a huge boost to downtown, I think. Anyway, we're spitballing ideas, so what's we doing here?
Do, do public facilities also apply to City Hall?
Say that again?
For the roof?
You can get a roof on the City Hall.
Actually, City Halls are specifically prohibited.
Oh.
Just like police stations.
Our is like a little house.
Anything that has to do with the general conduct of local government is ineligible. Now, if you did a police substation, not a police main station, that's an eligible activity. But, City Halls, everybody wants one, you're not gonna get it out of City Gate.
Can we put a roof on our new police substation at City Hall?
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, Teri. We have one item left.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, this is the closeout on your 2016 grant. So, the last act that you as a grantee are required to make is to have a public hearing about the activity of your 2016 grant, which was purchase of a new fire truck, and to take public comments regarding the project.
If there's no council discussion, I will open it to public hearing. Good. Open a public hearing. Is there any public comment about the fire truck?
No use yet?
No? Okay. Closing public hearing, bringing back the council. Nothing?
So, so there is a closeout certification that if the council could direct the city administrator to sign that, we can send that up to the state to close out the grant.
Do you need a motion for that, a consensus?
Direction, Vince, do you want a motion, or just consensus and direction given?
I think a motion.
Okay. So, is there a motion to?
I'll move to sign it.
Well, true.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right, I guess.
Thank you.
Item E, authorize the implementation of Springbuck, Emily.
So, hopefully this is some good news to lighten up your evening. I'm really excited to bring to you online payments for utility customers. This is something that has been in very high demand amongst utility customers. And also, in particular, so I researched several different options, and the one that I'm gonna recommend to you is the one offered through our current software, our current accounting system, which is Springbrook. And they have, it's called online bills, it'll soon be called civic pay. I did have some materials that I, my attachment didn't get included. I would be happy to send them out to who needs them, who would like them. And, I guess. So, the, one of the main reasons why I opted for a Springbrook's version was because of, in consideration with, one of City Gate's recommendations was to increase automation in our department, or just amongst staff. And so, the Springbrook one would have a lot more integration with our current accounting system, a lot more automated processes, and would take out a lot of the manual stuff we're doing. The financial impact is included. One point of discussion would be, there is a transaction fee, that's one dollar per transaction that would be charged. I would, staff would like to recommend actually passing this off as a convenience fee to the customer, this is a very common practice. PG&E does it, they have a two-dollar charge for if you're using a credit card. If you use your bank account, though, they don't have that same convenience fee. I compared it to, you know, if you're gonna send us, put a stamp on your check and mail it away, you know, you're, you're paying that convenience fee for the postal service, et cetera. So, that's my recommendation. Any questions?
Will it be mobile-friendly? Will it, will it be mobile-friendly?
Yes.
Like to be on your phone, iPad?
I don't, yeah, like I don't, I don't think they have an app, but I think the website is mobile-friendly. So, what it is, is they would include, like a button on our current website that would then take you to a secure, a Springbrook-run website. The button would say like, hey, your utility bill here, and then you'd go to that website. And I did a demo with Springbrook, and it looked very nice. Lots of different options, very customer-friendly, and they did say it was mobile, mobile-ready too, to see it on mobile devices. But I think it would just be within your browsing.
But it's linked to the city's website?
It would just be a.
Like a push-button on the website?
Yeah, yeah. It would go to an external site, but you could get there, you would get there through our site. So, customers could find it easily.
As long as our site's okay. How's our site feeling?
So, would we terminate the auto-payoffs that we currently have?
So, right now, we are auto-pay, yes, well, eventually, we will, yes. It will, for the credit card, I would, I have actually put kind of a hold on it for now, till we get this figured out. The, the direct debit through bank accounts, we have a very good process, and so, keeping that as auto-pay, how we have it, is, is good. That would avoid the one-dollar transaction fee, because it wouldn't be using the site to do that. But as far as the credit cards, we've kind of just put them on hold for accepting new ones at the moment, and if, seeing what happens.
So, right now, people can either pay with a credit card, and have, or have auto-pay, or they can pay, was it ACH, they can take it out of your checking account?
Yeah, just through your bank account, yeah.
Just through bank account, so those are options they have today. So, what we're looking to do is.
So, customers?
Wean people off the credit cards, because that's time-consuming and costly, and have them use this instead?
Yes, so essentially, we would cut them off. We would, we would give a grace period over, and then direct, we're looking at, I've been in contact with CCWD, because they recently, it was about two years ago, they went to an online payment system, they went to Paymentus, and I, I've gotten a lot of their marketing materials and their processes, and so, it looked like they went through three billing cycles to send out three notices to their customers, saying this is the final date your credit card will be charged, you need to sign up with our new auto-pay, our new online payment system, and set up your new auto-pay. We were thinking of doing, just because of the, the time-consuming and, and how much it's costing us, we would like to speed it up a little bit, maybe go through two, two billing cycles plus an extra notice. So, we would be giving people, the ones that are specifically on the auto-pay currently, the extra notice, so that they know that this will be our last time that we're charging your card, you need to go onto the website and create an account and re-establish.
Do we charge people a fee now, and charge their card?
No, we do not, we absorb that cost.
Wow, okay.
Well, what's the city paying for that transaction of the card?
On the card?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure exactly, I could get that to you.
Well, it's important to the savings, right? It's like two or three percent to the average vendor.
Yeah, it's a five percent on which card they use.
It, I mean, it's costly that they're using their credit cards already. Yeah, but, but the main thing with what our process is for the auto-pay on the credit cards, we're not in compliance with the, the PCI, and that is a direct charge that they are charging us for not being compliant.
That's a problem.
Yes.
It's also a fraud risk concern.
So, so people have a chance now to go ahead and pay online, pay a dollar, or they can do it for free, they can have a debit from their checking account?
Yes.
Or they can always pay the old-fashioned way?
Yep. It would just be those transactions that were through the site, using your credit card, that you would be charged that extra dollar. We do, because we also accept credit cards if you walk in.
So, we're just trying to come up with another way of accommodating the people that were cutting off the credit cards, basically?
Well, and it is the number-one request that we get, is for online bill pay.
People like online bill pay.
Yeah, it's extremely high demand for that.
And.
People can go on, just pay one time, you can set up these reoccurring payments.
And it's automatic. So, that is a request that we get often, and then I think the system that we have is, from a security perspective, lacking. It's not compliant, and we either need to not allow it at all, so then you either ACH, mail it, Dropbox, or come by. But I think we would get a number of complaints about that, since we're spending four hours entering a credit system.
Now, it's clear that's gotta go away.
Yeah.
And then the costs on here, that's, that's assuming everybody, I don't know, you said eighteen percent of people, what percentage of people use the credit cards now?
Overall credit cards? I, I don't have that right on hand, that.
Because you're guessing eighteen percent of people will go to this new system?
Yeah, that was using, the percentage of CCWD's customers went to the online payment system when they implemented it.
Well, if you're using a credit card today, you're either gonna switch to the ACS, or you're gonna start mailing the bill in, right? Those are your options when you do away with the credit card?
Or take it directly out of your account for free.
Direct to the store?
Yeah.
When did that start? I wasn't even aware that was available.
Me either, else I would've signed up for it.
I, I don't know.
I remember when I did the auto-pay, it was not available. So, sometime in the last couple of years, this has become available, the direct debit? Nobody knows?
I don't know when it was implemented.
It's been, it's been available since I've been here, so six years.
That's not what I, that's not what I was told over the phone back when, yeah.
There's two, there has been typically two ways of applying for automatic payments, and one is with a form for your credit card, and the other is a form to take it directly out of your bank account.
Yeah.
Since I've been there, it's pretty much been recommended to use the bank account, because it, the way our system is set up, if she goes to run those credit cards and your credit card doesn't work, your bill doesn't get paid. And so, if you had fraud on your card, or some other, for some other reason, an expiration or something, you might get a late charge, because your bill wouldn't be paid.
Okay. I get a late charge, because sometimes my bill doesn't get to my mailbox.
Of course, I would step right up to that, I'm sure.
If there's no other further council comment, I'm gonna turn it over to public. Is there any public comment? Nope. Okay, bring it back to council. And thank you, Emily, I know you put a lot of work into this, and this has been an ongoing.
Too, I don't know if Emily mentioned this, but, you know, just as we look at moving the city forward, and we look at cost effectiveness and efficiency, these types of staff savings by updating our capacity for technology is, is important. So, this will, has the potential to free up four hours' worth of time for a staff person to work on alternative things in our office.
I also like to say there's a lot of really exciting things coming in the future and opportunities with this, that we can add on later as, as we grow and need more automation in the department. They have the credit card terminal, we can turn into the Springbrook one, which would increase automation on that end for when people come in and pay their bills. The other option, just left my brain right now, as I'm saying this, but there's just, there's a lot more opportunity going forward with the miscellaneous payments, and it just increases automation everywhere. It's gonna provide us with a lot of time, time savings in the future for staff, and this would just be the first step in implementing it.
So, are we also approving the dollar fee at this time, or is that something that's?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I think what Emily's given you is the comparison, so an option to pay by customer, and it has what we're anticipating to be a savings to us, fifty percent paid by the customer, and then the other fifty percent paid by the city, or all of it paid by the city. Those would be the costs associated with implementing that.
Yeah, so the savings is kind of a fixed thing, we're gonna save that twenty-six-hundred dollars, and if, and the costs are the thousand-eighties of fixed things, so if no one uses it, we, we save even more money. Right?
Oh, I don't think we're gonna not have that problem.
People are gonna use it.
People, it's a high degree, yeah.
Right now, we're already gonna have, you know, we have about just less than two hundred on auto-pay for their credit cards, that will be moved on to it within a couple of months.
So, we're gonna charge, well, the system will charge a dollar.
Yep.
Does that, where does that dollar go?
To pay this fee that we have to pay Springbrook.
And we're paying?
Springbrook.
How much per transaction?
One dollar.
Okay, so it's a break-even?
Yeah.
Okay.
We wanna provide savings.
Yeah, cool.
No problem with that. People want automation.
Oh, sure.
Okay, so, if we're ready, I'll move that we authorize the implementation of Springbrook Civic Pay or online bills, along with required budget adjustment, and along with the dollar fee per transaction.
Um, baby?
Aye.
Yay, thank you.
Good work.
Yeah, very good.
So, Melissa, before I go on to the next, so this isn't on the agenda, but it's in a packet, so should that be an item before council report?
I'm sorry.
I'm just, okay.
I made a mistake.
Okay, I didn't catch it when we approved the agenda, can we?
It just got dropped off, that's okay.
Okay.
What?
Okay. So, there's a consolidated staff report in our agenda, so that's up next. If there's no council question or public comment on a consolidated staff report, I'll move on to council reports. Is there any, anything, any public comment? Nope, okay. Council reports, I will go to my left.
I don't have a report, but I do have a comment. I just am happy to read that things have moved forward with what's been going on downtown in regards to the police department making arrests. I know that there was...
Hold the mic, hold him on. No, pull, pull.
Oh, sorry. I can't hear. I'm sick. I want to say thank you to the police department, and also, I know that there was a large public outcry in what was going on downtown with some burglaries and, and whatnot. And I know there was frustration being voiced and opinions of, you know, oh, they need to make arrests. They need to make arrests. It's like, well, you can know what's going on, and you can know who's probably committing them, the crimes, but you have to prove it. So, getting the news recently that arrests have been made, I was happy, and I know a lot of other people that live in Angels Camp are happy, and it's just a positive of, you know, yes, the police are doing their work here. Especially with the low staff, so.
Yeah. I will let Chief Ellis know, thank you.
Yeah, really, truly.
I attended the chief, police chiefs' meeting on Saturday, and the Donuts and Coffee meeting. And it went well, there were quite a few that came out and very active and very responsive and had a lot to say about the community members. I think we are aware of, what they made us aware of was, besides the homeless and some of the burglaries that were downtown, there's also kind of things around certain neighborhoods where they're feeling a little bit of threat. Some of the younger moms in town were expressing that, that they were feeling some threat from people who were actively breaking into their cars and that kind of thing. So, it was a good thing to talk, and they were kind of reassured and gave them some ideas of what they could do. And, and it informed the chief about kind of how people know when they're coming and how they can kind of go away and then come back. So, we are facing some things along with the homelessness, you know, right now, and I think that happens sometimes, you know, in a community that things kind of escalate, and then, you know, you have to kind of take care of all of it, and then they calm down again. And we're kind of in that escalation period, I think. And so, I know that even though we're limited, that, you know, the police are doing, and the sheriffs that are helping us, and I see other officers coming in, what is it with the CHP? Uh, which, there's another group that is coming in to help us as well, I think.
We have the sheriff's department and CHP.
And CHP, I thought, okay. And then, also, we had a couple of meetings this month, and Melissa presented at them about the sales tax. And that went really well. A lot of, you know, the thing I've noticed is I've not heard one person yet say they weren't voting for it. I'm sure there are people out there. But the contact that I've had at different meetings and things, people are like, oh, yeah, sure, gosh, we've got to, you know. So, anyway, I'm hopeful that it'll pass.
I attended the CVB event last week, and Jeremy was able to, he won his award for the event that happened down in Angels Park. So, that was really refreshing to see something positive come out of such a great turnout from the public here in town. And I also just wanted to say thank you for PD, for being proactive and hosting the event last Saturday as a result of the numerous incidents, as well as the neighborhood concerns that have been going on. So, I really applaud the staff and PD for making that first step. I know they're very busy with homecoming and Wild West, and to make that extra time to provide to the community was greatly appreciated. And if you're going to be in town, make sure you head to Wild West Fest.
No report.
No report.
Okay. Calendar.
Okay, tomorrow, Wednesday, the seventeenth, at ten a.m., is COGS TAC Board, TAC meeting at the Board of Supervisors' chambers. The IRWMA is from nine to noon tomorrow, TUD offices. And at nine a.m. is the CPPA meeting in San Andres. On the eighteenth, Thursday, the eighteenth, at eight-thirty, is Museum Commission meeting. And ten-thirty, DAC Executive Committee meets at the DAC conference room. On Friday, the nineteenth, from two to four p.m., there's ethics training for anybody who files a Form 700 and, and has to do their, every other year, ethics training. It's free in the Board of Supervisors' chambers, two p.m. The twenty-third, at five-thirty, is a UWPA meeting. Then, at eight a.m. on NOFA...